And our debate for District Five of the County Commission here in Leon County. And the NEBA President, Patrick Slevin, for those of you who are guests of NEBA members, so it's great to have you here. You notice that we have three of the four candidates at the head table. Diane is, I'm sorry, Paula is excused. She'll be here in a few minutes, so we'll kick into the program by my asking questions individually about the three candidates. And when Paula gets here, I'll have an individual question or two for her to make it equitable. Then we'll kick into some general type of questions for each candidate to answer. And the time limit for the questions will be up to two minutes. Doesn't mean you have to use them, but you have that for your benefit. And just so you know, I might ask some clarifying questions. So if there's a generic type of answer, I'll feel inclined to drill down to really get a better feel as a candidate where you are philosophically, ideology, and all those type of things. So our NEBA members who are going to cast their ballot can have a stronger sense of each of you candidates as far as the straw poll is concerned. So we'll go ahead. Jackie at the table here, just look at her. She's got, yellow is 30 seconds out?
I'm stopped.
Okay. So you've got 30, when you see the yellow, that means you go in for a landing and button it up, otherwise I'll have to be rude and cut you off. And I could do that. That's not a problem. Unless you're really saying something that is really deep and thoughtful, I might give you a few extra seconds, but I'll give the other candidates that type of equal time as well. So let me begin by recognizing, I want to recognize candidates and incumbents. And I'm really kind of changing things around. Usually we just kind of go across the table and just introduce them, but we're starting to see a trend this year, which I would like to encourage everyone to really embrace it, and that is the candidates and incumbents who are now NEBA members. And so if they become NEBA members, I'd really like to identify them ahead of time, give them that moment. And if you're not a NEBA member, well, this will be a little pressure for you to become a member, right? For the next election cycle, potentially. And so let me ask those candidates and incumbents to stand up that are NEBA members. Let's recognize you here. All right, so Jay Revel, Dustin Rivas, we got Rudy Ferguson, who won the straw poll last month. We got Commissioner Nick Maddox, good to have you here, Commissioner. And Judge Jones, right? Candidate for which?
Seat one.
Seat one. All right. Very good. Thank you. And I've been asked the candidates and incumbents that are yet to be NEBA members, so let's recognize you as well. All right, that's Commissioner Betsy Barfield from Jefferson County.
Give me an application. Now so I can vote.
Hey, we have a commissioner from a neighboring county. You know, that should put some added pressure on everyone else. So thank you for being here, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I know we have Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. She is from the city here. I know she was here. Is she gone? She's gone. Okay. But she was here, and she got a nice little interview. Any other candidates or incumbents?
Matt.
Matt, I got Commissioner Maddox. And so, thank, so everyone, thank you for being here. We have so many guests that attended in the last moment. I'm not going to, you know, we got a deep program. I don't want us to, you know, miss out on some, on some good debate interfacing. So for those guests that are here, thank you for being here. Just to remind you that it's NEBA members who have the straw poll, who passed those little ballots out. Was that you, Jackie?
They were.
Okay. So everyone has them, so make sure you hand them in to Catherine or one of the board members at the end. And we'll tally it up and announce later this afternoon who won the NEBA straw poll. And it's not necessarily winning the debate, but just who they're going to vote for, because NEBA members are pretty much plugged in. We know what the deal is as far as, you know, who the candidates are with their positions. But today, as in the other forums, to really get a chance to hear firsthand in a forum that might not be as similar to prior forums, because how many times have you guys debated now?
None.
Yeah. So let's hope that it's, we have a little bit of a different vibe here for some of those. I know some of you out there have seen them in other venues like Tiger Bay and so forth. So let's see if we can change it up a little, up a bit and make it a little more interesting. So let's all buckle up, and let's get started. I'm going to start off with Jay. Jay, you made it clear on your Instagram page that you won't kick the can down the road on passing policy, right? So if you're victorious, what's the one issue after you leave office that you can say, I did that?
You know, I think a lot about the state of mental health in our community. I think a lot about the state of homelessness in our community. I think it's a problem that probably has been something that you've experienced as you're driving around our communities, you're walking around. It's something that's getting worse. And one of the conversations that I've had amongst different partners in the homeless community, even with our state attorney, is that there's a real need for a regional mental health facility. We have so many people in our community who live on the streets, who are going without treatment, they're going without the services that they need. And again, if we're going to try to tackle that problem, we're going to have to do something bold and innovative. There's conversations already right now about should we expand the Leon County detention facility? If you want to know who the largest provider of mental health services is in Leon County, it's our Leon County Sheriff's Department through the detention facility. And I think we've got a real problem on our hands there. And I think that before we start talking about expanding that facility, we need to really roll up our sleeves and look hard at what we can do to serve those who are most need in our community. This is a real problem. And again, about a third of our homeless population are suffering from severe mental illness. And I think if there's one thing that I can look back on, you know, four years from now and say, hey, we really moved the needle on that, I think that's something I'd like to address, because it's a problem that touches all parts of our community. Just last Saturday, I walked, I did a crazy thing. I walked from the Chairs Community Center all the way to our courthouse downtown to cast my ballot on the first day of early voting. And I saw a lot of that problem once again firsthand, particularly at that intersection there at Mahan and Capital Circle and Weems Road. You could see quite a bit of that starting to be a problem. So that's something that I really would like to make sure we don't kick the can on anymore.
And I'd like to give 30 seconds for you to answer. How are you going to accomplish that? You know, how are you going to get the funding? And how will that happen?
Well, I think it's twofold. One, I think we have to look across our region. Again, you know, Tallahassee is in a really unique place. We're sort of in the middle of nowhere by design, right? If you know your history, we both, the city and the county turned 200 years old in 2024. We were put right here in the middle to become the state capital. And while other regions of our state have grown, and you've seen services like this come to those regions, our region, we stand out. We kind of tend to be the magnet for those who are seeking services all around the Big Ben region. So one, we have to partner with regional, local governments in the state of Florida to try to find as much resources as possible. And then second, we're going to have to examine our own budget. And you have to look at questions like, hey, should we build a new detention facility? Or should we look at a new approach to how we're treating these people who are right now in our care every single day?
All right. David, the next question's for you. Leon County continues to see an increase in crime. That's no mystery. How do you see funding the sheriff's office? And let me clarify that by, you know, do you believe that the sheriff's office here in Leon County should be getting, are they getting too much money? Do they have enough? Do you support getting more law enforcement on the streets? Love to hear your answer. You've got two minutes.
Thank you, Patrick. And thank you for everyone here holding this important forum. I know you have a lot of candidates. This is a critical election year, and I'm glad everyone here is staying informed and making votes that matter. We do have an increase in violent crime problem, and we do have a significant, a significant amount of our county budget goes to the Leon County sheriffs. I would like to see, when we talk about, you said, more sheriff's officers on the streets, I would like to see that in the form of walking the beat, community policing, not necessarily cruising through, knowing your neighborhood, knowing your neighbors, being out there, one-on-one with people every day. I think that's one way you can start rebuilding trust and relationships that is badly damaged. As far as the budget goes, I think that we need to make sure that, I'm going to step back to the excellent work that the sheriff and other community partners did on the Anatomy of a Homicide Report, that identified just how expensive it is to our county for every homicide, and the long-ranging impacts on children, and most at risk is young black boys, to intervene to help them stay on track before they get routed onto a path to prison pipeline, alternative schools, and detention centers. And I, as far as funding goes, I support the funding we've added for the Council on Men and Boys to support that. And I think that's where our funding should go when it comes to law enforcement funding, because it's not just a law, crime is not a law enforcement only problem, it is a community problem. And by looking at the long-term impacts, all the economists agree, investing in caring for our children before they get off track is a long-term benefit for every member of our community, and it reduces crime. And additionally, we have to address crime that is currently occurring.
All right. Thanks. All right, Dustin, you're up next here. You've been spoken about the affordable housing issue. Specifically, what's your plan for solving the affordable housing crisis? And how would it be funded? And would you have even considered rent controls?
You told me that. I forgot. Sorry. Nope, I'm good. Before I answer that question, I want to first recognize my beautiful wife in the back, Lucky. Thank you for allowing me to do this. It takes a lot of family time out of family time to do this, so I want to thank you for that. I've got my dad and my mom, and some other family relatives and friends and colleagues in here, so thank you all for coming and showing your support. To answer that question, I think we need to look at three separate things. We need to make it easier to build in this community, despite what you think. It's pretty difficult to build here, especially when we're talking about building multi-units, you know, a couple hundred houses at a time. Getting a PUD done is very difficult and very expensive. And so how can we find ways at the county to help, maybe it's a pre-PUD, to make that a little bit easier on development and cut down on some timelines to figure that stuff out? Secondly, we've got to increase the supply. This is a supply and demand issue when it comes to affordable housing. Clearly, there's not enough houses here. The third thing is, I think we need to start looking at materials like SIPs and ICF foam boards, different types of construction materials that could bring down the cost of building houses so we can actually build those a little bit quicker. But it's also utilizing the land that we have available to us already in the county. I'm not a huge believer in infill. I understand the purpose of infill, but I don't think people want infill. They want to go outwardly a little bit. They want a little bit of land. They don't want to have to be stacked up elbow to elbow next to each other in some of these neighborhoods. And so as we start to see people grow outside of the MSA here, you know, out Buck Lake, out, you know, Mahan area, we've got to start looking at how can we make it more affordable? It's really expensive. Materials are expensive right now. I get it. I just built a house. It's over budget, has a whole new meaning. And so how do we find ways to make housing cheaper? And I think we have to look at the materials, and I think we have to look at how can the county help us get permitting done faster? I think those are the three ways that I think we look at addressing affordable housing.
Jay, I want to come back to you on that. You've been on record talking about smart growth and how development here in the county is negative and positive, right? I'd be interested in knowing, what is your definition of smart growth? And what, if you can give us some examples of bad growth that you've seen over the last, you know, several years?
Sure. Yeah. So when I think about smart growth, the thing that, there's one word that really comes to mind, and that's character, right? I think most people in here, hopefully, would think you love where you live, right? You probably love your neighborhood. I live here in Myers Park. I absolutely adore my neighborhood. It has charm and character and personality, and it's very reflective of, I think, what people think of when they think of a Tallahassee neighborhood. And one of the big differences that we're seeing right now is that we've got new developments that are coming online. You know, I'll be the guy who points one out. I think Canopy is an example of one that maybe didn't quite meet what we would call our community character standards. And a part of this is a problem that goes all the way back to our comprehensive plan. So I'll be, let's see, I'm 35 years old now. Our comp plan's almost as old as I am. It's a really interesting situation. The document that is dictating how we grow in our community is out of date. We're constantly having to amend it. We're constantly having to change it. And those who are doing development in our community, they're adhering to the laws and the codes that we currently have. I don't think we do a very good job of codifying what our character is, right? If you think about the things you love about your neighborhood, the things that you find charming about Tallahassee, that really doesn't exist in a way that protects those things, that encourages those things. You're not going to find that in any of our code anywhere. And I think it's important that as, again, we turn 200 years old here in just two years, that we really take a step back and we look at what we want growth to look like in the future, and we figure out how can we take these things that we all say we love about Tallahassee, put it into our code, protect the neighborhoods that we have, and make sure that when we're building new neighborhoods, that they emerge with the kind of character that we can all be proud of and want to love and enjoy.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to ask the other two candidates, do you have anything you want to add, or you didn't agree with it?
Absolutely. The comp plan is absolutely too large. I mean, it's probably, it's probably by and large larger than any other municipality our size in the Southeast United States, if you look at it. Most other municipalities, I would say, is probably a third of the size. And so we need to really look at that. I think we need to scrap it and start over. That's a big process, but I think it's time to do that. As Jay said, it's old, it's outdated, we're consistently amended it, we're putting Band-Aids on things, and we need to have a horizon-focused approach on how this community is going to grow. We are organically growing, and people are coming into the state of Florida, and we need to be attractable, we need to be an attractable city and municipality, just like other areas in our community, or in our state.
David, you want to add?
Yeah. Did you say one minute?
Yep.
We all know we have an absolute affordable housing crisis. It is not affecting only poor people, it is affecting everybody who wants to own a home and who wants to rent. I know exactly how that feels growing up. My family lost our family home after medical emergencies, and I know what it means to fear when you're going to get kicked out and when you're, when you're going to, where you're going to go. And so many members of our community face that, and they can't do good work. They can't run a good business. They can't take care of their kids well because they're in absolute crisis. When it comes to comp plan, sure, we can scrap the whole thing and start over if we want to spend years deciding what we're going to do in the future. The issue we're running into is how we make decisions. And I do not believe we can just make long-term rules for every eventuality. I think we need to have leaders that have good judgment, that take all opinions and all parties into account, and decision by decision, make the best decision for all parties involved. What is smart growth in one community and neighborhood between the developer and the residents is different in another neighborhood. And we need leaders who have, make responsible, thoughtful decisions each time.
So David, why you have the microphone? Keep it up there. Question is for you here. You've participated in fundraisers with Jeremy, Jack, and Kristen, right? Jeremy Matlow, Jack Porter, and Kristen Dozer. How are you different from them? And name the one individual endorsement that you're most proud of.
Patrick, to be clear, you mean I donated money to them by, you mean participating in fundraisers? We haven't shared any events or anything. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. I've donated to those candidates over time in prior elections and currents. And how am I different from them? I'm a different person. I am CFO, most recently of WFSU Public Media. I spent 15 years overseeing government and nonprofit and enterprise government finance departments of all sizes. I am a financial expert in public finance, and I think that makes me unique about them. We may all be in the same boat, as in we're entering politics late in our life, not that late in our life, but we didn't grow up thinking we were going to join politics. We're not part of an established group that has always been building towards that. I identify with them in that we saw a problem, and I'm fortunate enough to have the resources and stability to take, take the lead and give up a career to focus on helping people in the community. You will see, when I make decisions, they will be based on my best judgment for the people of Leon County, and they will not be a doctrine from anybody. It will be, hopefully, this election, you get to know me a little, and you decide if I'm the right person to make decisions for you. And when you vote for me, you are voting only for me to represent you. The endorsement I'm most proud of is my wife. We haven't put that on flyers, because I don't know if anyone else values my wife's opinion as much as I do. And I could not do this without my wife's endorsement and support.
All right. All right. So we're going to move to some general questions that I and the board put together for y'all. And when Paula makes it here, we'll hit her with a question or two as well. So I'll go, and start with you, Dustin, on this. What political figure, past or present, has had the most influence on you and the reason why you're running for office?
Quite frankly, I don't think any, any political figure has any influence on what I'm doing. Actually, let's look back and say, all the political leaders currently elected, you know, that haven't solved the problems that we have, that's my biggest influence for running. You know, I'm on the outside looking in and don't like what I see. And so that's why I decided to step out and take this journey. I've got four businesses, almost 20 employees, beautiful wife and family, and, you know, if not me, then who? You know, as a business owner, I don't think our, the business community is being represented. As a tech, technology owner, I don't think the tech community is being represented. As an electric vehicle owner, I don't think the electric vehicle community is being represented well. All of those things have driven me to make the decision to run. So there's not a political figure per se, but the current leadership that we have in both the county and city is what's driven me to run.
All right. Jay, same question for you.
Sure. So I've always admired politicians, elected officials, who have two big things in common. One, they have the ability to build consensus. And two, they get things done. You know, you heard me mention earlier that I did a crazy thing on Saturday and walked all the way from Chairs to downtown. That was a little bit of a nod to Lawton Childs when I was a kid. I remember when he passed away, and our entire elementary school went out on the Highway 90, which was the route that he walked on his famous walk-in Lawton Trail back in 1970. And I remember learning about him and learning about what it was like, you know, when the state of our politics was a lot more collegial, and people came to work every day regardless of their party and regardless of, you know, whatever their beliefs might be, and really had this desire to work together to create the best possible outcome for their community. That's what I admire about government. You know, it's hard to find that these days, a lot of times it seems. But I think we can do it. I think we can do it in our community. And the reason I love local government is because more times than not, that still is the spirit, especially when you're looking at, if you've ever been to a county commission meeting, your commissioners get along pretty well for the most part. City might have a little work to do over there right now. But we can do it. Again, there's too much on the line for our community right now for us not to find ways to build consensus, to create a cohesive vision for where we want to go, and to move things forward, and to do so with haste. You know, we've got these big challenges ahead of us. You're going to hear all of us talk about it. We've talked about housing, we've talked about poverty, talked about crime, homelessness. All of these things are very pressing. And again, we're, there's 297,000 people who live in Leon County today. We're just shy of 300,000 residents. In 20 years, we're going to have half a million people here. Those problems are not going to resolve themselves. It's going to take people who can build consensus and create the opportunity to get things done. And that's why I'm running for office.
David? Did you, you didn't answer that question.
Can you repeat it for me?
Who is the, who is the political figure, to be past or present, that inspired you the most to run for office?
Is this the same question as the one about who I'm most proud to be endorsed by?
No.
Okay. Yeah. I'd say, sure.
If they're dead, how can they endorse you?
They may have, who knows? Who knows? You know, the people who inspired me the most, I think, are people, they're not really a specific political person, and it's actually, it's not an elected official. There are people in my life that are not well-known. In their community, they may be community leaders, but they're not on boards, they're not necessarily in a political office, but they are public servants, and they help the people that they know how to help. Whether it be in groups that struggle from the same issue, whether it be in neighborhoods, it's all the people in my life who I've taken the example of that, all the money in the world, once my needs are met, all the money and stuff in the world cannot buy happiness, but helping the people around me that I can help does. So there's not a specific person, and certainly not a political person.
Well, since I'm not running for office, Ronald Reagan was my inspiration. And so that, well, I ran for office. Fortunately for me, it was a Republican district, so I could even say that. Shining City on the Hill, safety hardware. And so thanks for the answers, or the non-answers, but they're still inspirational. All right, now, let's get into some specific issues, and some of them that are mentioned here, we'll drill in on the next two series. And Jay, we're going to, I'll direct this to you first. With the rapid growth on property values, do you believe that keeping the millage rate the same is considered a tax increase? And let me clarify that by saying, how would you have voted on the millage rate?
Yeah, it's a tax increase. That's the way the laws are written here in Florida. And, you know, to be honest, I think I would have voted to keep the millage rate exactly where it is. You know, I'm not going to lie. Look, it's more expensive. There's no doubt about it. But everything we're doing right now is more expensive. This is my first year as a business owner, it's my first year having a second child. I can tell you, you know, you feel these things in your pocketbook. But at the same time, when we talk about these challenges that our community is facing, they are steep, they are real, they are present, and I think that we need to make sure we have the resources available to combat these things and to change those trajectories. And I think our county government does a pretty good job funding a lot of different things, and I think in the years to come, we're going to have to make some very tough decisions on what we fund moving forward, and we're going to have to make sure that we're sharpening our pencils, and that we're not asking continuously for more money from our neighbors. We're going to have to use the resources that we have, and I think that that's something we're going to have to keep a very close eye on.
David, you've got two minutes on the millage.
As a CPA, I'm very familiar with tax policy. Too familiar, if you ask anybody. An increase, keeping a rate the same is not a tax increase, it's not a tax rate increase. The value's going up, and the overall taxes go up. I would vote to keep the millage rate the same. Our community is growing, our community's needs are growing, and we need to pay people to provide basic infrastructure and services that is part of having a local government.
Yeah, it's absolutely a tax increase. David probably needs to look that back up. We're paying more in taxes, bottom line, and that's the state law. City of Tallahassee and Leon County have a $1.4 billion budget. I would have voted to try to reduce the millage rate so we can all keep paying the same when it comes to property taxes. We need to be more efficient as local government. Think about it, $1.4 billion. You know, whether you agree with the Children's Services Council or not, I think at its core, we all believe in the belief of what Children's Services Council is looking to offer, but how we fund things like that is, I think, where a lot of people disagree. I don't think we needed to increase property taxes for that. I think we need to focus on how do we increase the tax base and lower the tax rates? And we do that by helping small businesses here locally, expand their services outwardly to other areas. At my company, 30% of our revenue comes from outside of Leon County. We're bringing that money into Leon County, paying employees in Leon County, to then go out and spend the money in Leon County. That's increasing the tax base so we can keep focused on how do we lower the rates. We've got to continuously look on how we can become more efficient. That's a lot of money. Most people don't even realize we have $1.4 billion between the city and the county. That's a lot of money. And to think that we can't find some wasteful spending and create some efficiencies so we can look at how can we service other things that we're talking about up here, I think it's a fallacy, and we really need to have leaders who will get up there, ask the hard questions, and try to pin, pin down where we can become more efficient.
Did you two have any thoughts you wanted to clarify?
What would you cut? I'd first cut out funding for some of the actual events that we have. I'll give you a prime example. TCC just got $50,000 from the county budget, and nobody asked a question, if we don't give you the money, are you still going to have your event? Or if we don't give you the money, are you still gonna, do you think ticket sales are going to falter? Not one single commissioner asked that. Every single commissioner voted yes to give TCC $50,000 out of the county budget. Um, and I think that money could have been spent differently. We have a lot of festivals that get funding every single year, year after year after year, and a lot of it's in kind through, you know, useful, uh, uses for the sheriff and the police department. Well, guess what? That costs money, that costs taxpayer dollars. These are successful festivals that generate revenue, they have sponsorships, they should be able to cover it themselves, right? So we can use this money in other places. That doesn't mean that I don't support these festivals. I think there's a lot of festivals that want to get started up and help bring in more beds and head taxes and things like that. They need help. Let's help them for the first couple of years instead of continuously giving money and resources to these, to these festivals that are already successful.
And just, um, from a decorum standpoint, if you can address the question to me and not to the other candidates, that's why. Well, that's a good question and, um, you know, that, that was a good benefit for everyone's fault, but moving forward, just come through the podium and we'll make sure we distribute that well. Um, since we're talking millage and we're talking economic developments, um, let's talk about FSU for a second. And David, you're going to be the first, uh, you know, to answer this question. Everyone agrees that FSU is a major economic driver in this community. If elected, how will you work with this economic driver and partner to grow this community? Two minutes.
That's a fantastic question. Um, before I was CFO at WFSU, I was overseeing the finances at the FSU Research Foundation, which is responsible for managing all their patents and, uh, intellectual technology. So I'm very familiar with all of the commercial activity that comes in from FSU. We think about football a lot, which is a big driver, but we also have a lot of intellectual property and commercial development that comes out of exciting scientific work at FSU. And so in fact, some of our county commissioners sit on the research, uh, the Innovation Park Research Board. So we need to continue supporting that in our economic development dollars. Um, everyone's favorite example, um, is Danfoss Turbocore as part of that. That is a big driver of using that technology and partnering with FSU and the county and the Office of Economic Development to, um, build and expand and create permanent jobs, um, good jobs, good paying jobs. Uh, and it's something, it's a fantastic example of it. I would continue that. And then we need to remember that FSU is a partner. And with any partner, we may not agree on every specific request, but we take each request and make the best decision. And FSU is a fantastic partner. I always like to mention how successful they were in, um, operating during COVID to help support county residents in addition to students in a way that helped kept people safe and, uh, operated efficient programs, among other things.
Okay, Dustin, you're next. I'll ask a question.
I think, excuse me. I think we need to make sure we have people that know how to, how to negotiate, how to bring people to the table, how to bring consensus. Um, you know, we can argue back and forth on whether FSU should have got the money or not, but the money's gone and we need to focus on how do we continue to elevate our local businesses? To think that the FSU money, uh, this blueprint money going to FSU is not going to create jobs and stimulate the economy, you know, they're not just a big partner, they're a huge partner in our local, uh, economy here. And I think we need to have people at the table that know how to have those conversations and reach across the aisle and say, hey, look, I hear what you're asking for, but what if we did it this way? What if we did it that way? How can we, how can we partner better, uh, to make more deals so that it's more equitable for everybody in the community?
Jay, and then Paula, I'll repeat the question for you. Go ahead, Jay.
Hey, Paula. Um, yeah, I know, so the FSU Doak vote, um, it's all good.
I was trying to answer the question.
That's all right, here.
Gina Gallo, okay.
Yeah. Uh, no, so this, this vote is, is in my mind, a pretty simple thing, right? Um, it's been very complicated, there's a lot of confusion, I think, in the marketplace about it, but what it really boils down to is, uh, were those dollars intended to be used for this kind of expenditure? And I don't believe so. Um, you know, it's not just the 27 million, you know, you, the 20 million for Doak and then seven for interest on that, and then it's also the additional $10 million that went to Florida A&amp;M, there's a million dollars that went to TCC. Uh, those, that's just not what those economic development dollars were intended to be used for. I love FSU, I teach at FSU, I go to the games, I cheer loudly. My daughter's got lots of garnet and gold cheerleader outfits. We have a lot of fun on Saturdays watching the Knowles. But that's just not what those dollars were intended to be used for. Back in 2013, 14, I went to every single one of the Blueprint Citizen Committee meetings where this was being debated and discussed whether or not to include 12% of our blueprint sales tax for economic development. I can tell you stadiums were never imagined to be part of that conversation. They were talking about projects like Danfoss. A client of mine is actually building that facility right now. I can tell you from looking at what they're going through, that is economic development. That's what it looks like when those dollars are used for what they're intended to be used for. You look at, um, uh, what's going, what happened with Amazon. You look at, uh, the projects that are being discussed out of the airport right now. That's what those dollars were intended to be used for. That's no slight on any of our universities and colleges and their athletic programs. I love them to death. That's just not what those dollars were intended to be used for. And I think a lot of people in our community feel like they got, um, kind of, to be honest, um, told a, uh, or sold a bill of goods that weren't quite added up to what they voted for. And, um, that's where we're at.
And Paula, since you came in and welcomed, uh, and once again, your excuse, and we knew ahead of time that you were going to be coming here a little later.
Thank you.
The question that, uh, that your counterparts were asked with regard to FSU being an economic driver, everyone agrees that that's the case. If you're elected, how will you work with the economic driver and partner to grow this community? You've got two minutes to answer that.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Can you all hear me?
Hey.
Go closer.
All the way up.
All the way up. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good afternoon again. Um, Jay and I don't disagree on this issue. I also believe that that is not what those dollars were intended for. And when we're asked this question, um, my, my answer kind of throws people off and I'm not quite sure why. They ask about the other schools that received the money and when they throw FAMU into the mix, that was a need. The, the building needed repair, so we, we needed to do that. But we do know that FSU has the opportunity to bring in millions of dollars. They've shown that time and time again. So I don't think that that was the best use of those funds. It's done now. Moving forward, what do we do? We make sure that we involve citizens because that's where the people are most upset. They feel like they were sold a false bill of goods. And that's what they're most angry about, and that's why we see all of this, these things happening, right? So we involve the people, make sure that we get more citizens input, and we find a way that all of us can get together, especially those of us that are small business owners. We're at the table talking about what this community needs. They said that they want more money set aside for minority businesses. We know that women want more businesses. We know that when women are in businesses, communities do better. So these are the things community members have already said that they want and need. There's an opportunity for us to start again and use that funding to help promote these businesses, especially women, minority-owned businesses and small business owners.
Well, that's a, you're right on spot. Uh, two minutes, and it segues to a specific question that Niba wanted to ask you. And before you got here, each candidate was asked a specific question, at least one. And so, um, we, we saved this one for you, um, and here you are. But you, you talked about the economic development and small businesses, you even mentioned that in your guest column today, the Tallahassee Democrat. So you are on record at previous forums suggesting local businesses all contribute revenue to a shared fund, right? That would be available to other businesses in trouble. Uh, can you explain how you would implement this plan and how it would work? And you have two minutes.
Okay, and, um, this is something that I saw, um, in another community. I'm not, I, I can't tell you the, the name, but it's up north, right? So what they've done, and I call it a community chess because I don't know a better name for it, but what these organizations do, and they're based on size, they put a certain amount of money into a pot. And when things go wrong with those small businesses or where they need micro loans, where they need support, they have a place to go to and get money where they may not be able to get traditional funding from banks. And it's not, it's, it's not an idea that's way out there. It makes perfect sense. If you're a smaller business and you're able to only contribute $50 towards it, well, then that's your share of cost. It's a place where you can go to get support and funding, not huge dollars, to shore you up to get past whatever event is occurring that's got you in trouble in the first place. And, and that's something that's worked well in those communities. So that was, um, the example that I was sharing, a community chess per se.
I want to ask the other three candidates, I want to give you all 30 seconds. You know, tell me what, tell us whether or not you agree with that concept? You have questions about it? We, I, let's expand upon this, this idea and see where it goes. And I'll start with Brian and work my way to, to Dustin, to Dustin. 30 seconds. Jay.
I would say, I would say that, um, we already have economic development dollars set aside from a sales tax, and we don't need to further in, take in more money from businesses, especially local businesses. What this hits on is what I want to do is just redirect Office of Economic Development's efforts to support local businesses' growth and development. If Amazon can get the fast track, our local businesses should get the fast track. And that is exactly what we should be doing with the existing economic development we have. It should be easier for local business to get expansion and growth than it was any outside corporation.
Yeah, I'll give you a, a different idea, too. Uh, there was a great piece on 60 Minutes a couple of weeks ago about the future of libraries. Uh, our county government administers all the libraries, if you're not aware of that. Um, libraries in the future are going to be places of learning, they're going to be places where you can find the skills you need, uh, to develop the life that you want to have. And we're already doing some good things there, but that's where we have a chance to teach people financial literacy. That's where we have a chance to teach people how to become an entrepreneur, how to start a business, how to have the basic tools you have to have so that your business doesn't go south. And I think that's a real opportunity for us.
All I could hear was business tax, um, and it was giving me the itch. Uh, no, absolutely not. I don't think we need anything like that. Uh, I think we need more good business owners that are stewards of other businesses. We need to help each other out. Uh, if there's a business owner that needs help, I've, I've helped them in the past. They've come to me, they've asked for advice, and if I couldn't help them, I would lead them to another business owner. Uh, that has had help. We've got three Chamber of Commerce's. We have, you know, folks like Niba here that can help in, in, in different ways, depending on the issue that you're having. Um, so no, I, I don't think that we need to create a, a community or a business fund, you know, through a business tax.
Do I have an opportunity?
Yeah, to be fair, and since you've heard three, you know, three folks here, I give you a minute for a rebuttal.
Thank you very much. Um, I hear, when we have these types of forums, people talk about would, should, could. Have you? Have you done it in the past? You have the opportunity to do it, have you done it? And what's happening is we have members of our community that are locked out of all of these processes. So if you are the ones contributing to this chess that's shown success to work, then you all decide who gets the money when and how it's used. That's my point. Thank you.
Can I respond? Yeah, go ask Ms. D. in Frenchtown at her kitchen if I've helped her personally. You ask if, if, what have you done? Go ask Ms. D. in Frenchtown and ask her about her business over the last six months.
I'm pretty sure you helped during the election, Dustin. We know, thank you.
And how many other restaurants did I help before the election?
Uh, do you gentlemen have anything you want? 30 seconds again.
I'll give you a, a very quick story. Uh, when I was Vice President at the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, uh, one of the things I was probably most proud of there was our work to actually remove the city of Tallahassee's business license tax. That was a tax that if you were a business, no matter what size you were, the first thing we did as a community when you decided to open your doors was send you a bill, just for the pleasure of doing business in our community. And, uh, when I took over, uh, running public affairs for the chamber, the first thing we did was pass a resolution as a board to ask the city of Tallahassee to get rid of that business license tax. I'm very proud that we did that. And, uh, it saved our business owners over two and a half million dollars a year here in Tallahassee.
I'll just briefly reiterate that we need to support our local businesses, and the last thing we need to do is ask them for more money to support them.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, obviously, we're, since we're a business group, we're interested in your ideas, your ideology. Uh, are you supportive of, um, small business? Are you punitive? Um, and also, we want to look at economic growth. And so with economic growth, in your opinion, what is the mission of the Office of Economic Vitality? You know, they just had a hiring, right, of a new director? And so I'd like to get your idea, you know, your ideas of what you think the mission is or what it should be or could be. And, uh, I'll start off with Jay on two minutes.
Yeah, I think that's a two-fold mission. Uh, the first part is that office should be constantly analyzing the policies and practices of our local government and making recommendations back to our local leaders for how we can reduce the burdens on business, how we can make it easier for people to make a living who want to do so here in our community. You know, it's been kind of echoed a couple of times already today, but it is very difficult to start a business in Leon County. It's very difficult. We have a reputation that, uh, if, again, if you talk to people in other communities, they know how hard it is here because we all go on vacation and talk about it, right, in other places. But we can do better and we must do better. And that should be a big part of the Office of Economic Vitality's mission, is reducing those burdens on business so that we can grow our economy from the bottom up. Secondly, we should be looking for game-changing opportunities. We should be looking for the ways that we can rapidly advance our economy when something like a doubling the size of Danfoss comes up, when an Amazon distribution center comes up, when, uh, this new airplane, aerospace, uh, airplane techno, excuse me, airplane disassembly facility, uh, comes up at the airport. Those are the kinds of opportunities that can rapidly accelerate your economy and create all kinds of different, uh, opportunities for smaller businesses to thrive. So those are the two things they need to be focused on. And, uh, right now, I'm not sure they've got that quite dialed in. Uh, and again, a lot of distraction over the last year when we talk about, you know, we spent more time talking about stadiums than talking about those kinds of opportunities.
Uh, if you don't know Keith Bowers, uh, he is absolutely fit for this position. Uh, you should get to know him, find out how you can meet with him, but Keith Bowers is going to completely be a stellar guy for this job. Um, I think a lot of people, when they think of OEV, um, they hear the whole, they, they push a lot of shop local and they look at attracting new businesses to Tallahassee and making sure that we have a business environment that will attract future businesses. And, and they've done that. What I would like to see them also do though is, again, goes back to increasing the tax base, how can they help us grow our small businesses into medium-sized businesses and medium-sized businesses into larger businesses to expand the footprints, to bring more revenue into Tallahassee? We've got to continue to focus on how do we grow our local businesses, not just how can we bring in more business? When we bring more businesses in, right? Got to have more employees. Those employees have got to come from somewhere. They're going to come from our local, um, workforce currently? Look at Amazon, that's a double-edged sword right now. Where are all those employees going to come from? I know some are going to come from, from trades workers. Think about it. If, if you're a plumber's helper or an electrician helper and you're making $18 an hour right now in this hot sun, and then here's Amazon, $18 an hour benefits day one, that's pretty attractive, you know? Um, so we've got some things to, to work out there, but also on economic development, how many local businesses do you know are going to be selling, uh, a product that's going to be living at Amazon in their fulfillment warehouse? I know two. How can we help people in Tallahassee that create a good sell at Amazon? It's not rocket science, but there is a method to the madness to be able to do this. Um, and I think we need to increase that so we can have more companies selling stuff outwardly and bringing that revenue in.
And Paula, when you see, um, Ms. Jackie over there with yellow, you have 30 seconds left on your answer, and red is you're dead, right? You're done. So, um, you, you're next. You have two minutes.
Um, so I, I had brought this idea, um, forward a little while ago where we were talking to a group of business owners who were lamenting about how hard it was to do business and to bring new business into Leon County. And, um, I offered a concierge service. In larger cities, you have one point person. If you're interested in bringing a business to Leon County, you have one person that they put you in touch with that helps you with the permitting, anything else you need to do to turn your business on, marketing, anything else, whatever's required to start your business. It was a one-stop shop. People have often said it's difficult to do business because they have too many places to go, too many different hands to touch or people to see within Leon County. But that was one way to make it do, make it easier for us to do business here in Leon County. So I like the concept that they have in the larger cities of the concierge service. Again, the Office of Economic Vitali, they're sup, they're supposed to help push business forward. They're supposed to bring businesses into Leon County. And I, I agree with my opponents here. We have been focused on the wrong thing for the last year, but now it's time to turn[1619.44] We have been focused on the wrong thing for the last year, but now it's time to turn it around. We can't keep looking backwards. We've got to look forward on what we can do better and what we can do next.
David?
Our local business is the backbone of our economy. You hear this over and over again, but you believe that our elected leaders actually believe that when they carry it out? Currently, our economic development efforts are focused solely, for the most part, on external recruiting of other businesses. We have amazing local businesses that are left fighting an unfair battle against national corporations that have enough capital to ride through emergencies like COVID while our local businesses suffer to get by with a little bit of CARES money here and there. And that is not how we should operate. We can create jobs and fix problems in our community when, instead of just recruiting big-name firms, we put time and money into making it easy for local businesses to grow and expand. How many business owners cannot find a solid workforce because parents cannot find affordable childcare? Why aren't we putting money into incubating and developing and growing affordable childcare that creates all the same jobs as, for the amount of money, as if you bring in someone external? And it frees up the workforce and it helps all the other local businesses? I am disappointed every time I meet someone who's a local business owner who told me, we tried to expand, we'll never do it again. We're just going to go with what we have. We need to make it as easy for local business to grow by fixing our community problems. That's where we talk about philosophy. That's where, I believe, the private market works very well for a lot of things. Some things, it is not functioning well, and that's where we can step in and adjust incentives. That's why we should put money and attention towards helping grow and expand local businesses. We need to make it so that you are not alone keeping your business open against the biggest competitors recruited in because it's the biggest ribbon cutting. We should be ribbon cutting, expanding your warehouse, expanding your operations, and growing your workforce.
All right. And we're starting to wind down, so we'll keep the next couple of questions down to a minute, okay? And Paula, I'm going to lead this off for you. Whether you like it or not, it's the banner of the free state of Florida has resonated across the country. Whether you like DeSantis or not, he has been credited or discredited with the influx of people moving from California and New Jersey and New York. And so, this preface is starting with you, Paula. In one minute, what is your assessment of the governor and how he's been governing the state in the context of people moving here?
I think he's got people moving here. What I can say is this, in terms of business and what this governor is doing for business, I'll give him a thumbs up. And that's kind of where I'll live, because there's some other things around that with safety and people coming in that I kind of disagree with his methods. So for business, I'll give him a thumbs up.
All right. David?
Florida's a great place to live. It's great for us to retire. It's a sunshine state for a reason. We always have people moving here. I personally do not agree with the governor's policies or impacts that his policies and politics have on us. And I think it's great that people are moving here, and I give more credit to the people and the communities of Florida for that.
Dustin, and then Jay.
Yeah, I definitely think when it comes to business, I'm glad to be in the freest state in the United States for sure. You know, we have a 21, almost $22 billion surplus that's been created. It's hard not to give a nod to that. It's also, you know, hard not to give a nod to the thousand people per day that are moving here. There's a reason they're moving here. It's also hard to not at least talk about how we have $2.7 million a day coming into the state of Florida. When you look at the state of Florida's unemployment rate, I think the unemployment rate is, I wrote down earlier, 2.8% versus nationwide, 3.6%. I think Florida's doing something right and I think DeSantis has a big part of that.
I think Florida as a whole is a very business-friendly state. We continue to see that in all the trends. I think the governor has continued a lot of those policies successfully. You know, I kind of always like to bring it back to home, right? Bring it back here to Leon County. You know, with all these people coming to Florida, I wonder what are we doing to attract the best and brightest people from all over the country to come here and take part in building a brighter future in Leon County? I think we still have a lot of work to do there. And I think that if we can enact better policies that are more business-friendly, that are more conducive to growth, and are more widely available to anyone in any size business, we will be able to do that.
I think we have time for one question. If you would, Catherine, if you can grab the microphone and Mr. Barney Bishop, and David, you'll get that back, so. And let's keep it a minute each.
Okay. So there was an answer to, there was a rhetorical comment made about what would you cut? So to lay the predicate under Governor Jeb Bush, when we had a downturn in the economy, he cut 10%. Made every agency cut 10%. Governor DeSantis, first year of COVID, made every state agency cut 8%. Question, are each of you willing to ask the county commission for the agency heads to go back and cut X percentage? What would that percentage be? And how would you convince other commissioners to make it happen?
All right, so I'm going to go, let's go my left to right. David, since you're getting the microphone, lead off, and Paula, you'll end it in the debate with the answer. One minute each, please.
Sure. In my experience overseeing budgets of governments and dealing with those cuts, I am not in favor of flat percentages across the board. We need to understand that it's okay to put a target that we need to cut, but each program and department is different. And when we spend dollars, we need to prioritize what is most important. So I'm not in favor of dictating a flat percentage across all departments, but certainly if a cut was needed to be made, identifying the amount and making the smartest decisions across all departments for what's most effective and what can be adjusted.
So I went to work for the Leon County government when I was 20 years old. I was Commissioner Daley, then Commissioner Daley's aide. I started in about January, mid-January of 2009, when the recession was really at full tilt. So I was there when our local government was cutting their budget by tremendous measures and watched it continue for a number of years. So I've been through some of those exercises. And I do think it's important that we continually look for ways to cut things out of the budget. But maybe more importantly, you know, we also have to look at how we're spending dollars today versus how we could be spending dollars or reduce spending in the future. We talked earlier about the need for a mental health facility. We talk about the incredible expense of housing people who have severe mental illness in the Leon County jail. You cannot do it in a more expensive fashion than that. So we've got to be able to look at ways where there might be upfront costs to doing something to make a change there, but long-term, it's going to save you money. So I think we've got to get creative. Again, Barney, I don't know if I have a direct number off the top of my head, but I think we should always do those exercises because right now, the economy is a little up in the air. We're not sure what it's going to look like next year. We probably are going to have to go through some of those exercises.
Dustin?
Yeah. I would say, let's start off running an exercise at 3% to 5% and see what we can, where the wasteful spending can cut. You know, it's not saying we're going to cut it, but it's saying, what if, right? Part of being a serial entrepreneur, owner of multiple businesses, is I've set them up to where if one is not doing well for whatever the reason is, that the others can pick up the slack. And I think we need to have that mentality when it comes to the different departments here. And I think that's a great exercise is if we had to cut something, let's say 3% to 5%, what would you cut? How can we become more efficient? Cutting something doesn't necessarily mean that you're taking everything away, right? As long as we're becoming more efficient, we can offer the same services. So that's what I would, I would absolutely do something like that.
Paula?
So I'm an employee of Leon County government, and we do an incredibly great job of managing the resources that we have. Huge congratulations to Alan on the way that he manages all of our money. I would also not be a person that would be okay with a blanket cut because I know how we steward our dollars. I know how we spend our money. I'd say there would be more prudent to make sure that we ask each department where there are areas where they may be able to reduce some of their costs. But I know how we, I know how we operate now with our budget. So identifying other ways to cut money, I just would find a better way to do that, not a blanket cut across each department. Does that answer your question?
My answer is enough. And thank you, Barney, for the question. And let's give a hand to the candidates for being here today. Niba members, make sure you do your straw poll. Hand it off to Catherine or Jackie or myself even, we'll tally it up. Thank you for being here. We've got some special type of debates that are coming up in September and October, so keep watching and the meeting's adjourned.